The committee of the whole meeting, or committee of the whole meeting for January 12th, 2021 to order. I'd like to ask councillors if there's any additions to the agenda. Councillor Demota.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Mayor. It's nice to have you back in the chair again and running a meeting. I just, I think, under new business, I just wanted to bring up a couple of items. I just have some questions for council on their boards and committees. Just for something for me to bring back to mind and maybe discuss the overall structure and see how things have been working for everyone else. I don't, it doesn't need to be a long conversation. So. And also, just a discussion on the future of the skate park. Just to keep that on the radar and possibly bring some updates. So maybe 9.1 and 9.2, so 9.1. Boards and committees, 9.2 skate park. And that's me trying to be nice to you, Mr Deputy Mayor. I have other things, but don't want to overextend the meeting.
So just for clarification, would we need to add those as additions to the agenda? Or because this new business items are brought up in new business? Just for clarification, what would councillors like to see? Well, we'll make the, oh, Mr Given.
Yeah, thanks Deputy Mayor Wilson. Yep, administration's recommendation would be to include them as 9.1, 9.2. That way, easy for a recording secretary, obviously, if there are the practices that other items can come at the table at that point. We can, we can manage that, but 9.1, 9.2 makes sense.
Excellent, thank you. Do I have a motion? For amendments to the agenda? Councillor Demota, thank you. All in favor? All in favor, everyone was in favor, passes. Item three, approval of the agenda. So do I have a motion? Sorry, councillors, you have a copy of the agenda. Do I have an emotion to approve the agenda as amended? Councillor Keller-Empe. Thank you, all in favor? Everyone's in favor, thank you. Moving on to item four, approval of minutes. Councillors have the minutes of December 22nd, 2020 in front of them. Are there any? Would anybody like to speak to the minutes? Or would somebody like to make a motion to accept those minutes? Councillor McGrath? All in favor? Thank you, everyone's in favor. Moving on to item five on the agenda, presentations, we have emergency coordination center update. Mr Hutton or Mr Van Tegum, would you like to take us through that, please? Thank you.
Thank you Deputy Mayor, worship council. This will be a brief, brief report today. I'm in between duties and just stopped in just to say hello to all you folks out there. The ECC continues to meet once a week, which is every Thursday. We have five objectives that we are working towards or maintaining. And they are, and they were the same objectives that we had the last report. To maintain interagency communications and to ensure concerted community response. To disseminate messaging to assist Jasper residents, businesses, seasonal staff to understand and follow the current provincial health orders and directives and any additional local directives where applicable. Maintain essential municipal services and ensure municipal staff facilities and services comply with provincial health directives and best practices. Maintain adequate inventories of protective equipment, PPE, which will be required for the daily operations and the COVID-19 response activities. And to seek and into investigate options for providing, if necessary, temporary safe housing for persons unable to avoid contact with COVID positive members within their home cohort. And that last objective has not been met. We're still looking into options, but that became a concern some probably before Christmas when talking with our counterparts in Bath where they had a number of many outbreaks within staff housing cohorts. We thought we would get ahead of the game on this one and fortunately, we have not had an issue with this. But we're Kathleen Waxer and her staff are preparing for it just in case. As you all know, the numbers are down currently, I believe, there are six active cases in Jasper. We no longer have an outbreak at the hospital. I spoke with Sergeant Bedezi, the RCMP this morning, and he let me know that they have no concerns. As far as the RCMP patrols go, they have been very active as far as patrolling the community as well as the ski hill. And they have, basically, they're focusing on education and not focusing on enforcement. And he's very positive in what the reactions he's been getting with the public and with the traveling public and the folks up for the ski hill. Also spoke with Lauren and Chisholm, I guess it would have been Thursday now. She indicated that the hospital is doing very well. They are maintaining without any issues, resources are all in check. They have all the staffing and supplies they need. And good news there was the outbreak that was in force is no longer. And just to let you know, we have a number of individuals that are actively in the ECC group, but they're not always actively at each meeting or involved every week. Sometimes people are brought into the fold and other times other people are not, depending on what we're working on and what we're doing. Right now, we have myself and we have, as the IC, and then we have John Greathead, who's my alternate. John's also the operations chief. And then we have Christine Nadaan as the information officer, Lisa Daniels as the situation unit lead. Natasha Malachuk is the finance and admin chief, and then Yvonne McNabb is the logistics chief. Kathleen Waxer takes care of our ESS group, which is the emergency social services. Neil Jones is our safety officer and he's also in the bylaw group. And then we have Sergeant Bedezi, Sergeant Rick Bedezi with the RCMP and the police group and our own. Neil Jones is the bylaw group, Don Smith is with the fire group. And we have an assistant information officer, Amanda Stevens, working with Christine, as well as a liaison officer, who is Lisa Redile. And Lisa would liaise with groups such as Parks Canada, Alberta Health, in some cases, SARCOP. Inber Commerce, that type of thing. We have the, our new CAO, Bill Given, as the ECC director. And we now have the ambulance branch, which is Rob Prince from Associated Ambulance for Alberta Health EMS. So as I indicated, not all these folks are at the table at one time, but we do meet every Thursday. And we deal with things as they come along, but I'll be quite happy to say that things, despite the circumstances that we're living in, things are going very well. I think we've done a good job earlier on to educate the public. And I think locally, we're doing very well. And I really do see the business community adapting to this very well. And it's very unfortunate for them, as we all know, but I do see that some of them are, are still doing quite well and kind of looking outside the box type of services. So that's good to see and the, the needles are going into arms now. The announcement yesterday was that EMS staff would be receiving their, their vaccination, which is great news for us. And as this moves along, as more vaccinations become available, then I'm very confident that things will start to flatten out here. So that's all I have, nothing specific, but if there are any questions, I would be happy to field them. Deputy Mayor, thank you.
Mr Van Tegum, appreciate that. Councillors, questions, comments? Mr Van Tegum, you had mentioned EMS staff. Would that include our volunteer fire department at this point or?
No, not at this point. That firefighters aren't considered in that category right now. Although we do offer the MFR, the medical first response service to, to the community. I would expect that that would be, we'd be somewhere along that line after the EMS and maybe before the general public. But we're not in that first group with EMS.
Okay, thank you. Councillors? There's nothing. Thank you very much, Mr Van Tegum. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to item six, business arising from minutes. Councillors? Any business arising? No, thank you. Moving on to item seven, policy and governance. Good, item 7.1, public health update and concerns. Council discussion as well as 7.2 council strategic priorities update council discussion. I think both of them are standing items currently on our agenda. 7.1, does anybody have anything to add to this item currently? Councillors, your note?
I just want to add a positive note to the whole situation. I have been called to do some work at Marmot Basin. And my duties are, I guess, parking lot supervisor. Prefer to call myself an ambassador on behalf of Marmot Basin. But I have worked, I basically patrol the parking lots to ensure that COVID cohorts are adhered to. And also for offenses like liquor and so on, so forth as well. There's two of us that do that on, on the busy days. And when the police is available, both either the enforcement officers from Parks Canada being the wardens or the RCMP, they come up as well. I'm just pleased to say that the majority of the people that come up there, come up there to enjoy the opportunity to have recreation. As you know, most recreation facilities are closed. Of course, in winter time, it's, it's difficult. But they're close, but the ski hills are open and the ski hills have done a really good job of ensuring with little, you know, divisions and separations of walls and lineups that are properly indicated to ensure that the COVID guidelines are being followed and encouraged and so on, so forth. And, you know, transportation is down to half and so on, so forth. And the people are receiving it very well. The public that, that I chat with, they're just happy to be able to be outside and enjoy the recreation. So, you know, the way from where I see it, I can't understand what is the problem elsewhere because the people here are so good about it and, you know, granted, they're all Albertans, so they, they know the guidelines. But they're really good about it. They're enjoying themselves and they're just thankful that they're able to enjoy a beautiful. We've had beautiful weather up there, so it's, it's basically an update or a report on what goes well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillors, your note. Anything further to item 7.1? Well, I would just like to congratulate all of the town of Jasper and their dedication in bringing the numbers from, what was it? They get its peak 56 and now we're down to six, which is pretty amazing. So if we stick with it, we'll, we'll get through it. All right. Well, thank you. Moving on to 7.2. Councillor Butler, are you raising your hand or about to raise your hand? No, you're all good. Okay, 7.2 council strategic priorities update. Would anybody, any councillor like to add to this item at this point? Today. All right, moving on to agenda item eight, brief updates. We have 8.1, in-town paid parking. I think Mr Given will lead us through this one.
Yeah, thank you very much Deputy Mayor Wilson. I'll at least start and intro it. And obviously, Ms Malachuk will provide detail. But in front of you, council, you will see a recommendation that came to council, I believe, on December 15th. Slightly adjusted, the recommendation today is that council direct administration to implement a paid parking pilot project in the 2021 budget year and the council direct administration present a project plan and public engagement plan prior to implementation of the project. The intent here, council, is to reduce the uncertainty associated with the startup of paid parking. And at the same time, acknowledge the fact that paid parking has the potential to provide a significant positive impact on the municipality's finances. Specifically by establishing more financial equity and drawing in more revenue from visitors. We appreciate that there's a lot of uncertainty out in the community and there will be a need to engage with stakeholders throughout the course of the project. The way that this motion is intended should meet all of those council aims. There are relatively low capital costs associated with this project. And that's why administration is comfortable recommending a pilot project approach, which would allow us to adjust the approach and address any negative outcomes that we might find as well as to ramp up over time. And so that's why the, the report and the recommendation is framed as it is. Council should expect to see administration return, should this, sorry, should this pass? Council should expect to see administration return in the coming weeks with recommendations on how we would engage the public, who we would engage. And a plan for council's review of administration's recommendation on how to implement the project. With that, I'll open it to council questions, debate. And obviously, on the technical aspects, I would refer those to Ms Malachuk.
Thank you, Mr Given. I'll put this out to councillors. Councillor McGrath will start, please.
Well, thank you very much to administration, first of all, for, for preparing this really concise report. And the recommendation given in the report is very laid out clearly. And I really appreciate the way in which it has been delivered to us. So thank you for having it here before us and I think the timing is very perfect. I am certainly in favor of moving forward with administration's recommendation as it's laid out.
Thank you for that, Councillor McGrath. Any, anyone else out there? Councillor Demota, please.
Well, there is a longtime resident at Jasper that once stated that pilot projects are for the birds. And I tend to agree with her at times because you go and you try stuff out and, you know, if it's not really working, sometimes it gets abandoned. And I think this is something that we need to implement in our community for the foreseeable future. We need to aid our, our businesses as far as the, the commercial taxpayers go and, and help relieve some of the burden on residential taxpayers as well. So I think it's important that we communicate this well. And so it's well received by, by all our stakeholders. And I'm, I'm, I'm ready to go with even proposing, going with a particular group already. I've reviewed the, the presentations again, and I'm very comfortable with, with going with one. The more we talk about who should, who should we go with and, and go through more PDFs, we've had our presentations. I have a feeling and I know what's, what's worked well in other resort municipalities. So next week, I'm, I'm ready to make a motion to go with one of the groups that presented, if they're still willing to take us. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just add there to Councillor Demota's thoughts. I, I think pilot project just gets us going and gets us going quicker. You know, it starts the conversation, starts us like wading into it immediately. And I think we have to set a date. I'm assuming that administration does have a recommendation there. But, you know, I would hope myself, I think, along with some other councillors, would, would like to see, you know, something happening late, late spring, so we can really hit the ground running this summer. And I guess if there are no other questions currently, I'd just like to add one more myself. Well, I guess the first one would be what date we were thinking to be online for the project? And then the second one was if we would focus on just the street at this point or just parking lots? Or would we focus on both at the same time and try and both out this year?
Yeah, thanks Deputy Mayor Wilson. Just to speak to that, I think in terms of start date and Councillor Demota's point about the groups that may be able to provide the service, those would be things that administration would bring forward in an additional report that would outline the project plan. Certainly, we would want to discuss with stakeholders, the startup dates and the areas that would be the, the first areas to, to be a part of the program. And the intent here of the pilot project is not to say that this is something that we may back away from at some point in the future. Rather, it's to say that we expect to take a thoughtful approach to implementing this change to the community. And so rather than saying, well, we'll either wait until we have it perfect or we will hold off on doing anything at all. The idea here is that we may start small and then grow over time, but that we would do that in consultation with the community so that it's a thoughtful approach. So for Councillor Demota's concerned about pilot projects being for the birds, you know, I think that they have a lot of merit because it does allow for meaningful input from affected stakeholders. And, and at the same time, allows administration and council to move forward with priority projects. So we're trying to find that balance. And, you know, this is an ideal project because it is relatively low capital cost and is flexible. I mean, we can start with a limited number of stalls in either the lots or on street, to be determined. And then we can dial it up over time based on the reaction from visitors and reaction from the community. And so that's the intent here. We would expect to bring back information about recommended start dates and who we would ultimately select to assist us with the service at a future meeting should council give the approval that's recommended here next week.
Councillor Demota, I'm going to go with Councillor Butler first and then Mayor Ireland, and then we'll come back, circle back to you. Councillor Demota, please, thank you.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Wilson and thank you very much, Mr Givens. And administration for bringing this back to us as we had requested to have the conversation about paid parking early in the year. I have a couple of comments and concerns that I'll raise. The concerns I have are primarily around what's listed in the additional information. I'm, I, I guess I would express my view toward the potential incomes as being hopeful with a little bit of skepticism. I would like to understand and hope that when this comes back with a implementation plan that we can see with a little more certainty that we stand to gain as much as nearly a million dollars in net financial benefit in a year. And I would like to understand better what breadth and length of, of implementation that revenue number is founded on. I, I would love to think that we can see that kind of income, net income in a year. But I'd like to have a little bit better sense, as I say, of so is that parking implemented throughout all of downtown? Is it implement, would it be implemented on streets alone in, also in the parking lots? So I'd like to see that built out a little bit. To be convinced that there is such benefit, if there is such financial benefit, it's hard to see a way to not go forward with this. Secondly, I'm a little confused by the recommendation and maybe by the order of it. I'm, I'm concerned about giving mixed signals to the community. I think we have to understand that if we're going to have a meaningful public engagement plan, then the decision of whether to go ahead is based on the outcome of that public engagement. So I'm not very comfortable saying to the community, we are going to implement paid parking and we're going to have a public engagement program on it. If we're going to have a public engagement program, then the community needs to be assured that our decision to go forward will be based on the outcome of the public engagement process. So I am looking forward to seeing the project plan and a public engagement plan because the public engagement plan has to show a project plan. There is going to be, I don't want to anticipate outcomes of public engagement, but I think we can all recognize that there's going to be some opposition. And so we need to be very clear on what our rollout plan would look like so that people can understand the implications and so that we can hopefully achieve as much support as possible. So let's be clear that the first bulleted recommendation has to be dependent on the second bulleted recommendation on what does the plan look like? And what are the outcomes of public engagement? And then we decide whether we're going to go forward. So those are the comments I have and thank you again for the thoughtful way in this, in which this is rolled out. Sorry, I meant to say the thoughtful way in which this request for this decision has been put together.
Thank you, Councillor Butler. Good points. Moving on to Mayor Ireland, please.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Wilson. I will start just furthering those comments by Councillor Butler. And, and I agree, and I had some notes to that point. And that is, I, I would think that rather than two recommendations, it could be rolled into one recommendation. And that recommendation be that council direct administration to prepare and present for council consideration a project plan and a public engagement plan focused on the possibility of implementation of paid parking for this year. So that we, we combine everything in, in one and not, as Councillor Butler said, give an indication first that we are going to do this and then figure out how to do it later. So I accept that. I also fully endorse the intent of the, of the report and the recommendations. That is, this is not, as I see it, so much a pilot project signaling that we are tepid about the implementation. It is more a reflection of the fact that we can acknowledge that we may not get it perfectly right the first time and we can adapt and change over time. And so we start with something, but we don't pretend from the outset that we, we necessarily have all the answers. So I, I agree that, that we should proceed roughly in this fashion. I think that the most critical components of this are some that have been discussed now and are in the, in the report. That is, is it applicable to parking lots or on-street parking? And if so, is it, is it equal? And then dealing with the undoubted spillover impacts to neighboring residential communities. That, that has to be a part of it. And that is why I think it's important that we have administration look at those. And it's a, it's a more secondary matter who we might hire to, to implement at the end. So the question of which of those groups who presented to council last summer might be engaged. The real issues are not those. The real issue is how this is going to impact our, our residents and our downtown commercial sector. So I am, I am very favorably inclined to say yes, go ahead, but with, with some limitations on the direction. And I do want to point out that not covered in the background is the fact that sometime in the last 10 years, we were presented with a report that was authored, I think, by Vern Balding, who was then the Director of Corporate Services that dealt with these very same issues. And in particular, the issue of whether paid parking should apply to parking lots and on-street parking or one or the other. I'm not sure whether I can lay my hands on a copy of that report, but some of this work has already been done and it was very well done. So I encourage administration to, to start from that preliminary work that is available to us somewhere. And just carry it forward and then come back with that incorporated with the public engagement plan. So very much appreciate. Very much appreciate the the request for direction that's before us. Thank you all for that.
Thank you for that, Mary Ellen. And just to briefly add to that. My my end, this might be too far into the weeds, but already, but my my kind of inkling would be to have certain free parking area areas such as the park that large parking area across tracks that. Doesn't get used to its potential. But then again, having paid parking within the downtown core. Sorry, but that Counselor Demota, carry on.
Thank you. And and you know, as far as me making comments on on pilot projects. I basically, my intent was exactly what the mayor had stated. So I appreciate. Quick clarity on that. I'm appreciative also of the comments that Counselor Butler made on public engagement and. Maybe for the next committee of the whole, if we can have. I know this is kind of outside of of the agenda a little bit. But our public engagement policy is something that I've been wanting to revisit. I think. The last time that we've revised, it was 2013, and and by the MG, I think we might be a little offside right now. And that does need to to have an update. And then going forward, I think it's really important regarding. You know, paid parking to to have as much stakeholder participation as possible. And as well. We'll have to bring back at at the next committee of the whole. The sidewalk extended seating. Discussion that I I think that we're supposed to be reviewing early this year. So again, off a little outside, but this kind of works. Within this topic right now, and I think that those need to be addressed when when we're talking about this discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to Mr. Given there in a second. I I just commented on the sidewalk seating. I think I saw it is going to. Sorry. P D A, the P D A board, this cut this. I think a week or two from now. So I don't think we'll see anything about that until that has kind of gone through. But Mr. Given. Go ahead.
Thanks Deputy Mayor Wilson. I just wanted to speak to one item, excuse me, with respect to, I guess, the sequence of motions here. As a council can appreciate, administration is still working on the 2021 budget. We want to be in a position to come forward to you with acceptable recommendations. And in order to do that, administration does need to sort out some of the underlying assumptions that will drive the budget. And certainly. To Counselor Butler's point, the revenue assumptions that are here are probably best case at full buildout revenue assumptions. But we do need some clear indication of council of whether there is a direction to implement paid parking at all in 2021. The idea here that so that direction would allow us to come forward with some budget assumptions on the revenue side. I will say that they, you know, given that the cautious approach to implementation. It is not likely that council will see budget assumptions in the first year of paid parking that would match exactly what you see in this report. My intention would be to bring something somewhat more cautious. But having clear direction from council that, yes, we are going to move forward with some form of paid parking. That is driven by the perspective of the community. But we are going to move forward with that in 2021. Allows administration to be in a better position to come forward to you with a budget. And so if we leave the decision about. Whether or not we're going to do any form of paid parking to be following public engagement. That makes it. Adds an additional layer of complexity for administration in presenting a budget to you. In a decent amount of time. So the intention here is to appreciate that the form of paid parking, the. Exact sites, the exact costs, all those details will have to be worked out with affected stakeholders. But that administration does need that direction to understand whether or not this is a revenue source that we should do any accounting for in 2021. If we don't have that clear direction and we're waiting for the results of the public engagement. That would likely mean that administration being cautious and reasonable would not include any revenue. From paid parking in the 2021 budget that we would bring forward to you in the coming weeks and months. So just to speak to the 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 intention behind the sequence of recommendations there.
Thank you, Counselor Butler. Would you like to follow up on that? It seems as if there is support behind paid parking, and be it that it is a pilot project, we could. Give direction forward that we're moving forward in some form of. Paid parking. With the idea of consulting stakeholder groups and if if it if the result of that is. Is negative, and we don't want to move forward, we could still move forward. But I think the idea is this year, this budget, we would like to have. You know, a line item for paid parking included, and I think I'm getting that from all of counselors. But again, we can give you that direction next week. Any any counselors, let's go counselors, your no, Counselor Keller, empty, and then Counselor Butler, please.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor and Mr. Given. On your last comment, was it saying that you indicate that for this year you would. Put not put any income in the budget? Again, I missed the last state sentence that you indicated there.
Sure, certainly, if I could through Deputy Mayor Wilson, Counselors, you know, yes, what I did, what I said there was. If council left the decision on paid parking to follow. A public engagement process, then administration would likely not include the revenue in our 2021 budget. Because we couldn't at this time say when that process would conclude or how long it may take. And we do need to be in a position to bring forward a budget to you. And so this is to get some certainty on. Whether or not it is a revenue source we should include in the budget.
Mr. Chairman, if I can follow up.
Please do.
I thank you. Yes, I was, I would like to suggest that, you know, for the if for the coming year, any revenue would go into a to a surplus, to a dedicated surplus. Only because I think that we've not had enough figures here. I think that your numbers are very ambitious. I think that there's going to be a lot more growing pains to pay parking. Then we think. And but I'm not opposed to paid parking. I think it's time. I think it's time we moved on with it. But I would think that we would not be putting anything in the budget for this coming year. For paid parking, I think there's going to be. But we had one or two years for sure of. Pilot trial implementation before we could see a definite revenue stream. Thank you.
Counselor Keller, please.
Thank you, Deputy Wilson. I support the project. I think. We need to move on with some paid parking. Personally, I like the idea of maybe June to September. We pick two or three lots within the downtown core, make them paid parking. And make sure that the areas around there that have residential, that they have permits or whatever, bring in something. So the residents, the traffic's not overflowing onto those streets and impacting them and. Set to, you know, that it's seven days for that amount of time at whatever money, put that in the budget. We can. It's public here today that we're looking at this. Our residents then. Set up a public engagement between here and June, what are residents and our businesses. See how that goes and implemented from June to September. And see what the fallout is. You know, I mean, that's how we started busking. That's how we started the outside. Sitting for restaurants. I think there's no harm in trying. We have to take that step forward, and we have to find alternative revenues.
Counselor McGrath, please.
Just a question for clarification, perhaps from administration. Does any of this have to go to Parks Canada or P D A, being that other things of this nature? Do? Do we have full authority to implement paid parking on our own? Or does any piece of this need to be seen by parks?
Go ahead, Mr. Given.
Thanks Deputy Mayor Wilson. I will look for confirmation either maybe from Mayor Ireland or from other members of administration, but. My perspective at this initial stage would be that these this is municipally controlled property. And that we should have the ability to make this decision without having to go through P D A. Isn't a change of zoning. Or a change of use. It is in fact, the same use is just whether or not the municipality is choosing to charge for the use of that property, and I believe that should be full. Within councils authority. I see Mayor Ireland nodding, and so I don't feel like I'm too far off base.
Mayor Ireland, please. Thank you Deputy Mayor Wilson, and not on that topic, I I did not, and I agree that we should be able to do this. I I just wanted to circle back and thank Mr. Given for that. That clarity in the nature of the two recommendations and the importance. For the preparation of the budget to have some direction sort of generally without knowing the specifics. And so a an indication early or a direction that. We would. Be inclined to implement some sort of paid parking allows you to then build out the budget with that in mind. But it I then also consider that a budget has two columns. And only one of them is revenue and the other is expense. And so if you are going to build out a budget that incorporates any degree of paid parking, then. There is going to be some expense, and even if the revenue is deferred to later years, which is, I suppose, quite likely at some point. We cannot proceed unless we've budgeted for the expense, and there will be an initial expense. So. It it now makes. Much greater sense to me why you've split the recommendations as you have and why you need a separate recommendation. Which would be a direction from council, at least for budget purposes, to build this out. Doesn't mean that council after. It approves and engages in the public engagement process. Could not decide to withhold or not implement the project this year, but if it's not budgeted. We will have no opportunity really to proceed. So I I now find myself having listened to the argument. Persuaded that I I do see the sense of a direction in very general terms, so that administration can get back to the important work of building out. A budget which has been. Deferred and to which we have to return fairly quickly. So I I really do appreciate. You correcting my line of thinking on that, Mr. Given. Thank you for that.
Thank you for that, Mayor Ireland and Counselor Butler. My apologies, I did skip over your, I think, a couple times there. Go ahead.
No, that's that's fine. It's it's a really good conversation, and I've been. Listening really closely to what I'm hearing. From the rest of council, and I wanted to circle back, just as Mayor Ireland did to Mr. Given's explanation of why the recommendations are. Presented as two bullet points in the way they are, and I I do, I'm very sensitive to. The need for some direction. Otherwise, we could do public consulting from here until some unspecified future date and not move forward. In this year, and administration needs to consider budgetary impacts. So. On that basis, I'm prepared, I'm in favor of. Specifying or stating to the community that we're going to move forward with some form, we we've continued to use that term, some form. Of public park, sorry, of paid parking. On a pilot project basis, and I I agree that I don't think we can move forward without that clarity of direction. Community will need to understand that we will not get it right. Initially, and that's why it's a pilot project. And that we're going to have to look at some of the details because the devil may be in the details. So I'm prepared to support the recommendation now that I have a. The dual recommendation now that I have a clear understanding of why it's there. I'm very sensitive to something. That Mayor Ireland brought up earlier in these conversations, which is that this being the last year of this council's mandate. I do think it's important that we don't honestly just talk about this for the coming year. And then leave the go forward to the next council. If we think that this is something we need to do, and that we've never faced the kind of revenue crunch in this community that we. Are facing in in the two, these two current years. We've never been in this situation. So really, there's no better time than now. To at least have a look at what the economic impact of going forward could be. So. On that basis. I've come down to being in favor of what's in front of us after listening to the conversations. Here, I would like to talk a little more in due course about some of those details of what. Implementation might look like, but I'm not sure if this is the time. But I could come back to that.
Okay, well, from what I gather, I'll try to sum up what we've discussed, unless there's anything further. I I think that we. All of councils in favor of moving forward with some sort of. Paid parking on a pilot project basis, and we'd like to request that administration bring forward a motion in this regard. Next meeting. Don't have the date in front of me, but next regular meeting, so we can give. Direction to administration to start working on this and moving forward with the the project. Head and head nods, think so? Excellent, head nods all around. Mr. Given, do you have everything you need from us from today for today?
I believe we do. Thank you very much, counsel.
Great, Counselor Butler.
Thanks, and with your permission, I'd like to delve into a couple of areas of concern that I have, and this is going to be part of. What maybe a project plan will look like, and therefore what public will engagement will look like. I I think that there is a great deal of concern in the community that if we implement paid parking downtown. And kind of leave it at that. That we're going to see unintended consequence in the form of more and more visitor parking extending into residential areas. And I believe that is a real sensitivity in the community and one that we should be aware of. From the beginning. The fact is, we have a tremendous amount of unregulated parking around the community, as we all know, people just sort of. Park here, there, sometimes very long-term parking, which is actually contrary to our own bylaw. And there's already sensitivity to that in the community, and if we. Implement paid parking and create the consequence of visitors parking more and more in residential areas because they can do that. Without being bothered. I fear that we're going to engender more and more pushback from the community. So I think that dealing with. Parking regulation in residential areas has to be part of the conversation, or we are likely to shoot ourselves in the foot on this. And then the second thing is. That while we've been talking about paid parking over the past months. One thing that I have heard come up quite often is, well, it will not, or it may not. Apply to residents, residents needn't be concerned because we won't be charging residents, and I'm not sure that there is any sort of clarity around what that would look like right now. And we better be clear on that, or again, when we go to a public engagement, we're likely to just have huge pushback. And so when we go to public engagement, let's be clear about at least what our pilot project will look like, and those two particular areas. How do residents themselves fit into the scheme? And how will we deal with the potential of. Flow out of visitor parking into residential areas, which will cause, I I'm pretty sure. Some real dissatisfaction on the part of residents. So those are two areas that I hope administration will be. Fully building into the pilot. Project rollout. Thank you.
Sorry, I was going to say, I'm not sure I need to, but I think just to add to that, Counselor Butler, I think, you know. Sorry, I was going to say, I'm not sure I need to, but I think just to add to that, Counselor Butler, I think, you know, definitely support what you're talking about there. And I, earlier I had said, suggested something about having a free parking area remaining on the other side of tracks and really getting behind the message and advertising where that is, and and that it's free, and you know, again, it doesn't solve the problem that you, you brought up, but it, but it assists in in a solution. But giving, giving visitors definitely the opportunity to sure park a little bit further away, but, but still have the ability to park for free and really maximizing that parking area as well. But you know, of course, it doesn't solve the whole problem, but I, but definitely would assist with it. Anything further, counselors would like that? So I think we got what we need for today. Administration will move forward with this, and it's a pretty exciting conversation to start in the new year here. So looking forward to, thank you very much. Let's move on to item 8.2. Another exciting topic, municipal elections 2021. It's, we're only 10 months away, I think, or less than. And I believe Mr. Given's going to start this one, and then probably Mrs. Nodden will follow up, I think.
Sure. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson. Briefly, council has a legislative requirement as we head to the 2021 municipal elections to appoint a returning officer for that election. That's the recommendation that you see in front of you. You'll see that there is a returning officer and a substitute returning officer to make sure that we have some backup. And Ms. Neton and Brian Byrne are both ready and able to fill these roles. So we look forward to council support for the, moving forward, so that we can prepare to engage the community and council and in the 2021 municipal election.
Counselors, do you have anything to add to this at this point? Okay, so this is really in front of us for information, and then would it be next meeting? You bring something to us, Mr. Given?
Yes, I'm still getting used to the pace. I'll look to Ms. Nada, Nat on Christine. This would come forward to next council for ultimate approval. Is that correct?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Given. This is here for information for council today, and we would be looking for a decision at the next regular meeting, which is next week.
Excellent. My question, sorry, counselors, no, we'll go to you first, and then I'll follow up.
Yes, I could. It has to do with the scheduling of the October meeting. So the election would be on October 18th. Our second Tuesday, our second regular council meeting would be on Tuesday, the 19th. Did we discuss that at all when we approved the calendar of meetings for the 2021? Because it seems to me has to be a time there between the election and before we head into council. Just a question, and it's something to consider when you're moving on with this. Thank you.
Would any, sorry, would anybody like to comment on that, or just really just keep, keep aware that we may have to cancel that meeting?
Deputy Mayor Wilson, there was just a note from Ms. Byrne here that there is no meeting scheduled for that date, but we can certainly confirm that. But according to the council calendar and what Ms. Byrne is suggesting, there is no meeting scheduled for that day. But also, having that said, election day, by the time the results become official and the new council is sworn in, and there's a series of events there that it, there's a little delay between the election day and when the new council starts meeting. So we can confirm that certainly, but according to Ms. Byrne, there is no meeting scheduled for that day.
Great, thank you. Ms. Nodden, could you remind us who served in these positions in the 2017 election?
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor. We're in a situation where our corporate history in, on that file has departed the organization. Joyce Patura was the returning officer in 2017, and she had served with Mrs. Cahill at the time. So had some experience as a deputy returning officer and then was appointed to that position at the time. We had just Ms. Cahill had just left the organization, so Legislative Services was formed, but it really in its infancy and not in a position to take over those duties. So that's how we landed here for the, the 2021 election. But Ms. Byrne was involved in the 2017 election, and also there are significant, a significant amount of resources coming from the province in terms of training and information, and I took the training in 2017, just did not participate in the election process itself, but we do feel that it's a legislative process that we can handle quite well internally with our current skill set and staff.
I think, yeah, that was my question. Do you two feel comfortable filling these positions in, in October and it sounds, or sorry, not in October, of course, throughout the year, but it sounds as if you are ready for the, the challenge?
Yeah, we, we are certainly. And the alternative would be to hire a contractor to be the returning officer, but due to changes in the Local Authorities' Elections Act where nomination period actually started on January 1st, it is an extended period of time which would present some challenges on that front. But again, we've discussed this with Mr. Given, and we feel like that's the best path forward.
Excellent, thank you. Anything further, counselors? Mayor Ireland, please.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson. I just wanted to confirm whether it is the role of the returning officer to accept nominations. And if that is the case, the law has changed the Local Authorities' Election Act, so nominations are open as of January 1st. It used to be that, I think you had to wait till nomination day to file your nomination paper, so you only needed a returning officer on that, by that day. Now it's critical that there be somebody in place in the off chance that somebody already wishes to file nomination papers. So I certainly support the, the recommendation, but I would suggest if we're going to deal with this next week, as I think we should, because it is urgent, it should come with another motion to waive notice. It will only be one week notice, but we should get on with it. So we should have a motion, I think, next week to waive formally the two-week notice period and make a decision next week, because this is a position that already could technically be receiving nominations, and we have nobody appointed. So the sooner the better, I suggest.
Excellent, thank you. Well, we see that, I think, both news outfits are online here as participants, and you know, I'd like to put out the call and get people interested in thinking about what, whether they'd like to serve their community in the, for the next four years coming up, and it would be really great to have a, a big selection of individuals in this upcoming election and, you know, encompassing it, representatives of across our, our, our community. So, well, thank you. Sorry, Mr. Given, please.
Yeah, Deputy Mayor Wilson, just to Mayor Ireland's point, council and the public should know that the municipality is in compliance with the legislation, and members of the public that wish to submit a nomination, there is already information on the municipal website to do that. We just haven't named who the returning officer is. And so, you know, doing that early in the new year allows us to be in better compliance with the legislation, but it hadn't stopped us from meeting the requirement to open the nomination period starting January 1st. Christine and her team were prepared and ready to do that and had already made the appropriate steps to do that. So if there is anybody that, that is looking to run, they could go on to the municipal website today and begin that process in accordance with the legislation. So that hasn't, hasn't waited. It's just identifying the specific individuals that will fulfill those roles that's in front of council now.
Great. Thank you very much. Anything further on this topic? Okay, well, that brings us to other new business. Everybody's doing all right. Nobody needs a comfort break. I think we're speeding along. Let's carry on 9.1. Boards and committees, and I'm going to let Counselor Demota start this one up, please.
Well, my main concern here is the same concern that happens every year because we're waiting through budget presentations and deliberations and, and decisions based on, on the budget. And like last year, when we were trying to implement an environmental responsibility committee, it got bumped down the road, and then COVID hit, and we had all sorts of other things to deal with. So I wanted to keep this on the burner. I've been going through our procedures bylaw, and I just wanted to go forward with at least establishing the committee, which I believe is somewhat loosely established. It's named. But now we have to come up with the terms of reference. So we have to establish the membership, the purpose and, and authority of the whole thing. I know that this does put an extra burden on administration. So as in the past, and even talking with Counselor McGrath, we were ready and willing to help out with anything, whether it's coming up with terms of reference or assisting and all that. You know, we're willing to provide some time and going through that so that we can at least go forward. It's an important committee to have to start off with, and it's something that needed to be revisited a while ago, and I think there's a little bit of frustration in the sense that it's, it's, it's getting moved down the priority list, and I think particularly now with, with some of the things that have evolved through the, the COVID situation and our restructuring of how we want to do things as far as cardboard and recycling goes, that it's pertinent that we get this at least established and, and have a few meetings in before the, the new council gets sworn in for the next year. So a little bit of housekeeping, but at the same time, going forward with a responsible initiative. So I guess I'm asking here, what should be the next steps?
Mr. Given, please.
Yeah, thank you to Counselor Demota through Deputy Mayor Wilson. Thank you for flagging that. Administration will consider the best way to bring this forward, and we would come to a future council committee, the whole meeting in the coming weeks with a recommendation for council on how to move forward with that. I appreciate the offer of hands-on council involvement. We will keep that in mind as we identify the best way to bring it forward, but thank you for flagging that. I will review the procedure bylaw with the team, and we will bring forward a recommendation on how to advance establishing the environmental responsibility committee.
Thank you, Counselor Demota.
Thank you for that, Mr. Given. And just the, the second part of that is just, I don't think that, you know, I want to go through an extensive review of, of our committees and the committee structures at this point, but I know that we talked in the past of, of maybe reviewing some of the other operations and successes of other committees. I know that Counselor McGrath belongs to the community conversations, and that format seems to work really well, and, and I'm still curious to see if that format could be adaptable to other committees. When reviewing the, our procedures bylaw in, it was brought to my attention, Schedule 3, application and interpretation of our procedures bylaw does apply to council committees as well. And I'm not sure if that process or structure is still in place with many of the committees that we attend, and, and maybe going through that procedure bylaw and, you know, in, in our, on our own time to look at how our own boards and committees are operating and maybe thinking about what could be adjusted and brought back to the table for adjustment within ourselves, not, you know, putting the full burden on administration, but things for us to consider for some consistency across support. And, you know, maybe with looking at that consistency, what's good in some boards may not operate well in others, and those conversations I think are worth having. I don't want it to be too extensive, but just asking council to, for the members of the committees that you have and boards that you have memberships on, just to kind of loosely go through that and see where we sit. I would like to make some recommendations down the road and, you know, talk with the members in, in my committees that I belong to on, on how they feel the procedures and policies are in particular to, to those, relevant to those particular committees. If that's clear enough.
Okay, thank you. Anybody like to add to that? All right. You're happy to move on, Counselor Demota?
Oh, yeah, totally fine.
Thank you. Okay, well, right back at you. This is 9.2. I think you got some updates or would like to discuss the skateboard. Please start us off.
Yeah. I, another thing that I don't want to fall off the radar and maybe have part of the budget conversation. Again, before we went on our holiday break, and this is a little bit of a refresher for our new CAO as well. The skateboard committee does have a deadline to get their application in for the CFAP grant by June 15th of this year to get matching funds, and they need to have, they would like to have at least half of the money raised for the cost of the development and completion of the skate park, which is looking now more like in the neighborhood of $900,000. There have been two charitable foundations that have come forward that are willing to donate $100,000 each to, to help us get closer, or, you know, the community and, and the skate park committee closer to its target goal. However, if were, or they are unable to get some matching funds at least to, to their donations, they, they're going to pull out. So they want to see some community engagement here, some participation in the fundraising, and maybe by other stakeholders in, in the community to, to help this thing go on. It's an important thing. We've seen a lot of people come forward on social media on how important outdoor activity is for youth. I know right now that there's some conversation in in getting some more flooded areas for outdoor skating and within the municipal boundaries to play hockey or just skate in general. I, I, I'm enjoying watching that, and I think, you know, for summertime activities at the skate park is going to be a valuable asset to the community, and enhancing that is going to be important. So I don't want the conversation to fall off the radar for us, and I know we have a lot of important things to discuss, but I believe for many of the people in this community and people visiting Jasper that this could be an important component of our service and our offers.
Mr. Given, please.
Yeah, I guess, so appreciating that we're in committee, my practices, my understanding is that this is a little bit freer to ask questions and a bit more of a dialogue. So for council, I guess, a question to you, would this be the kind of item that council would typically provide administration, some form of, of direction on, if not approval, you know, certainly not at this stage looking for approval of a certain amount of funds, but I could imagine a situation where if it was the intention of council to provide some type of financial support for the skateboard project, that council would give administration some direction to include something in the budget. You know, again, we're talking about budget assumptions. Administration is in a position where we're trying to understand what we need to be bringing forward to you for 2021. I could imagine council making a motion, and again, still getting used to the, the pace and process for, for your council meetings and committee meetings. I could see committee providing some direction to administration to include consideration of support for the skateboard park project in the 2021 budget, and it, it could be subject to, you know, community fundraising reaching a certain amount. It could be, you know, that direction could be that administration provide, you know, up to a certain amount of money in, you know, or include up to a certain amount of money in the 2021 budget. But, you know, I think we probably are at a situation where if But, you know, I think we probably are at a situation where if it is the desire of council. To be ready to support the community and moving forward with the project, then council should be on the books somehow. In telling administration that that's your intent. I would hate for the municipality to be behind the eight ball after the community has done its work. And for the municipality not to be in a position to enable the community to go forward with securing extra funds through the CFAP grant. So if it is council's intention to to support the skateboard park project. My suggestion, or I guess request, would be that you make that intention clear by giving us some direction in the form of a motion. Again, that that could be that administration include funds to support the skateboard park project. In the twenty twenty one budget and council could choose how you would wish to to make that subject to, you know, subject to the. Total amount of funds being, you know, collected, subject to successful grant application or even up to a maximum amount. But again, it does help us establish what needs to be incorporated into the twenty twenty one budget. And having some guidelines around that would be really helpful.
Thank you, Counselor McGrath, please.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor Wilson. I am certainly in support of this conversation happening here. And furthering this conversation to a motion for inclusion in the twenty twenty one budget. The skate park is going to be an incredible accessible asset in the community of Jasper. And I would like to formulate some level of certainty for the residents of Jasper that this will happen. And I'd go as far as saying, no matter what, so if the CFAP grant fails and if fundraising dollars don't come in. I want us to back the project so that we have the community knowing that the skate park will happen. And it will happen in the next couple of years. I would like this council, as I know, we're all in support of the skate park happening. To make that bold step in the forward direction so that we do ensure the creation and the build out of a new skate park.
Thank you for that, Counselor McGrath. Counselors, your note, please.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor Wilson. In my three years plus on council, my approach to this has changed and that I look very favorably on this. We have COVID, which eliminates all team sports, so it's going to be more of an individual activity, more outdoors. This really falls right in there. We spend a lot of money on recreation, like millions of dollars, supporting recreation, it's all for team sports. We don't have very much for individual sports, so I'm definitely in favor of this. I'm pleased to see that there's been some fundraising commitments and I'll just throw a number out there for the. Council to consider. We have nine hundred thousand, they get a grant for half. Would the council be prepared to go for a quarter? That'd be a number and then the fundraising committee has to to meet something. So I think we've talked about this long enough and it's it's my my interest would be to. Try and find a way to move forward, so by putting a number out there will be one step, in my opinion. Thank you for that.
Counselor Demota, please.
Well, having some close contact with the people that are coming forward to contribute to this. They they want to have a little bit more, they want to promote a little bit more of a grassroots growth to this thing. You know, I was very inspired by the progression of the the December project this year. And even though it might be hard to sustain that type of momentum for a few months regarding, you know. Fundraising for a skate park, the intensity for that was concentrated because of the December project. You know, fundraising for Santa's Anonymous and that sparked a lot of outside activity and challenges and things like that. But the the donors here really want to to get some. The community involved, that was their idea and maybe other larger stakeholders. I know this this year might be the most difficult out of all years to consider funding for a skate park. And we've heard from from our, the commercial sector that, you know, they're already tapped out as far as, you know. Having to take loans out and all this other stuff, so it's going to be a tricky thing to try to pull off for this year. I know that the original intent wasn't to have council backstop their amounts, so in case the community fundraising fell through. There is a pretty adamant that, you know, if if they can't get enough energy behind this from the community. That, you know, they just don't want to to be the bailout mechanism to get this thing going. So it's 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 more of a challenge, I guess, like the December project challenges were to to get some stakeholder engagement here. So I want to, I want to keep fueling that and, you know, the, I agree with with the other counselors and I appreciate. You know, Counselor McGrath and Counselors, you know, coming forward. With those comments and I think it's it's a really good time at the same time to to have these discussions and see where we can find some. You know, value in in promoting this.
Come to you in second there, Counselor Butler. It seems to me there is, you know, a variable amount of support and I think, you know, seems to be. Support, majority, sorry, the majority of council supports this for sure, but to a variable degree. I I just like to put in my two cents saying that. In the end, this is going to be our asset and if if, you know, if we can get, you know. The, you know, sorry, donors to assist us and or grants to assist us, well, that's great, but we've got to realize. I think like in the end, this is ours and we we should almost be willing to foot the whole bill. It's great that we can get support doing it and that, you know, it's very similar to the stage that unreal that we were able to get. Tourism Jasper and CN to to come to the table and support us in such a huge, huge amount. To, in the end, give, you know, assistance and having an asset for years to come. So I think we got to have fully support it. Yes, let's let's go out there and get as much assistance as possible. But in the end, we do have to put our full support behind this and be willing to come up with the short. The shortfall, so it'd be very difficult to put a number to it, I think, at this point. I think I would support suggesting that we support it wholeheartedly and we'll we'll. We'll come to the table with whatever is the shortfall and to shortfall to make this happen. My apologies, Counselor Butler, go ahead.
Thanks very much. I am fully in support of seeing the skate park built in the community. I'm not very comfortable with funding that would be seen to backstop or funding along the lines of what I think. I I was just hearing in that council would say, well, whatever it costs, no matter what it costs, we'll make that happen. I think that's a pretty sure way to make sure that community contributions will not happen. Because no one wants to make community contributions to something that they think that in the end will be funded. By municipal council, which means by the taxpayer. So I would be, in fact, more comfortable with some sort of contingent funding. And listen to everything I've heard about some likelihood of community support and CFAP grant. I and I appreciate Counselor Jono's willingness to start throwing a number around. I'm wondering about the idea of council making a commitment to some maximum. I've had the potential of about three hundred thousand dollars in my head. Some maximum and position that as matching so that council would match community funding. To a maximum of some amount and I think that could incentivize the community to get out and put money into this. And that I think that with a combination, therefore, with a combination of council, municipal funding, community funding and the CFAP grant. That we could get the numbers up to where I think they need to be something a little shy of a million dollars. And I think there are other opportunities for the municipality to look for ways that we could support with land. I have some concerns with the current site and I think it might be worthwhile having a conversation before a lot of money is spent. About whether that site is the best place. I think there are some concerns with the potential of it sitting on top of some important utility lines, which I think isn't a very important. A very big problem now because we can dig there if we need to dig there. But if you pour an acre or so of concrete on top of it, things change there, so that's a conversation that should be had. I'd be in favor of looking at a matching program to maybe two hundred and fifty or three hundred thousand dollars. And incentivize the community to step up. I think we have showed ourselves, shown our willingness to fund recreation facilities. Through a lot of event, adventure, we are borrowing money to upgrade and maintain. Replace assets in the arena and this has been mentioned very time, many times, that appeals to a certain demographic, but not to everyone. So team sport oriented thing, so if we have, these are tough times, if we have to borrow to do this, well, then maybe that's what we have to do. But I'm concerned that if we don't act within our term again, this is something that will just get pushed out to the next council. And I think that would be sad. The group that's been working on this has just been, I don't know, tenacious, bulldog tenacious. But they're small and and they need a strong statement of support. So why don't we look at a matching grant from the municipality in the neighborhood of the numbers that we've started talking about here?
Very true, Counselor Butler, thank you. And I would also like to suggest or get behind looking at alternative locations. It is currently hidden away, it is over top of infrastructure that may need to be accessed. And, you know, I would throw it out there, Ball Diamond Day looks like a pretty ideal place to showcase our new construction. If we're going to be putting a huge amount of money into this, let's show it off and let's put it in our area where we. You know, the rest of town recreates right beside the the ball diamonds, right beside the soccer pitch, right beside the park. That's and and and, you know, out in public where, you know, everybody of all ages kind of enjoy it. Not not hidden away between two buildings. So I saw Counselor Demota and then Counselor Keller, please.
Like before, I could defer to Counselor Keller and I've talked a lot on this already. I'd like to hear what what you'd like to say. If that's okay with you, sir, and I'll speak to that after.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson, and thank you, Counselor Demota. I'm all behind this and I really like the idea movement to Diamond Day. I think it'd be great to have a central location, people can play baseball, the kids can go skateboarding. I think it's great and I like the idea of matching money. I think it's a great step forward. It's kind of like this council's legacy. I am, I agree, we don't, we shouldn't leave it to a next council, we need to act on it. And I think it will benefit the whole community as a whole. I'm quite excited about this project.
Go ahead, Counselor Demota.
Thank you. Well, you know, I appreciate the conversation about the relocation that might come with some more. Dollars attached to it and I see where everybody's coming from. We are losing some basketball courts down the road if if future development does happen. Does happen, so where the current skate park is, there's already pavement there, wouldn't take too much to to move those. Move those, but having said that, as far as the funding goes, I believe the committee right now with the potential donations. Donations coming forward from the two foundations that they're at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And four fifty would be the minimum requirement to go forward. So even if we matched half of that, if the community was able to to come up with, you know, a hundred thousand. And and we back, it's, they are big numbers, but in the grand scheme of things, I think it's an easier target to consider reaching. When you break it down that way and, you know, I'll I'll converse with with the interested groups and see if they're willing to to. Be amenable in their, you know, initial thoughts of how they wanted to. Get this thing sparked up, so I'll get back to the rest of council on that and I look forward to conversations.
Mayor Ireland, please.
Deputy Mayor Wilson, I just have some procedural questions perhaps for Mr. Given in particular. And that is just to sort out what administration considers it most needs to move forward. So if if there is a suggestion that. This council could commit to matching funds to match community donations. And sort out some maximum amount and I agree with Counselor Butler's suggestion that. The goal here, at least in my view, ought to be to incentivize community. Donations and fundraising and to build the sense, the necessary sense of ownership and people generally don't come out to. Fund municipal government as government, in fact, they they don't like to pay their taxes very much to start with and so they don't give us more money. So if we don't do this right, we disincentivize anybody from contributing. So I accept the the really cogent argument for Counselor Butler. But in order for administration to build out a budget is is a direction required? Is a motion required and in what year do we anticipate that this money might be spent? Because I I recognize we would like to make a motion and state our position. But if this is a spending item for the twenty twenty two capital year. It's not necessarily our decision in any event, but we can certainly make our position clear for a future council. But for the time being, is administration best served by? A direction or a decision and can we make that formally at our next council meeting on, what will that be, January nineteenth? And either provide direction to administration to include in the twenty twenty one capital budget. Budget some amount or will it be deferred to the twenty twenty two capital budget? And that is, I think, a critical differentiation, so we can make the statement for sure. But I don't know that we necessarily make the final determination, so I guess I turn that to to Mr. Given. And the short question is what serves administration best in order to build out the budget for this?
Yeah, through Deputy Mayor Wilson, Mayor Ireland, your worship. I think if there was, and again, not necessarily appreciating exactly how, you know, the pace of motions and everything falls for Jasper yet. You know, if there was direction from committee today to administration to bring forward a request for decision. Decision on the nineteenth with a recommendation, I think that would be helpful. That way it is clear that to administration that all of council wishes to move forward. We can bring forward a recommendation. Based on administration's advice and at the council meeting, council can debate. The conditions or amounts, you know, I think administration certainly has heard the broad level of council support here. We have heard some specifics around amounts and conditions. We could incorporate those and at the council meeting, council could see if we got it right. And we can also at that time make some recommendations about the impact on the twenty twenty one budget. Certainly, it is not uncommon for a capital project to carry over multiple years. That does happen and so. Subject to being corrected by other members of my team who are more knowledgeable, I would suggest that council could choose to approve this for twenty twenty one. And administration would have some flexibility to really have a close look at how much of it will actually fall in the twenty twenty one budget. And how much of it would be carried over to a future year. I'm confident that we'd be able to do that prior to presenting the full budget. But certainly council's direction to us to present options to move forward to you would be helpful to us in preparing the budget. And I think helpful in establishing clarity to the community that council is looking to move forward with projects. So a motion directing administration to bring forward recommendations on the nineteenth, I think, would be helpful to us.
Sorry, Mayor Ireland, go ahead.
I would then endorse that suggestion that, that council direct today that administration bring that forward for determination next week.
Oops, sorry, I was muted. Looks like everybody's in agreeance there. Yes, Council, yeah. Great, thank you. All right, excellent. Counselor Demota, thank you for bringing that up. So we got a little bit of forward momentum there.
Yeah, sorry, sorry to interrupt. So again, so is there a council member that has made that motion? And does it hold the weight of a vote of, of committee? Is that required? Or, yeah, again, let me just be not quite following process.
Go ahead, Mayor Ireland.
If I may, through you Deputy Mayor to Mr. Given, we often simply give direction in the absence of a motion. Because, because we're in committee at the hall, we can't make motions other than to go in camera and to, to adjourn. So I'm not sure that we are procedurally permitted to make a motion. But I think I saw seven heads nod in the affirmative. So I think that you can safely proceed with the assumption that if you bring forward a motion for next week, council will be receptive to that.
Okay, okay, thank you. Thanks for clarity.
Great. Well said. Glad I didn't have to do that. Okay, well, that moves on to Agenda Item 11, Council Representation on Various Boards and Upcoming Meetings. Any counselors got anything on the, on the GOAT? Counselor McGrath, please.
Last week, I attended a community conversation and a Jasper Community Team Society Community Building Workshop with David Irvine. Tomorrow is a community conversation that Counselor Butler will be in attendance on my behalf for. On Thursday, I will be attending the Municipal Inclusion Committee meeting and a library board executive meeting in which we will have our election of officers with our newly appointed board members.
Always very busy, Council McGrath. Counselor Keller and P.
Just an update, Community Futures, next week will be putting out a survey with questions to the downtown core on the revitalization study that they're doing. So those questions will be sent to Mr. Given. I believe they may have received them already. But I've also suggested go to Mr. Greatheart and the operations team because they were interested in the study as part of the budget. So I've asked Ms. Robbins to work with our operational team on, before those questions go out to the general public and the downtown core in Jasper.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Mayor Ireland, please.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson. Two short matters. I hope they're short. Although I see that you've already gone over the, the record short time that I sat a week ago. So we can adjourn now at any time. And I continue to hold the record for 2021. Upcoming meetings, it was mentioned earlier in today's session, that PDAC is convening, I think, virtually on January 21st, I believe it is, to consider perhaps, among other things, the application for the extended private use of public property. And that is the sidewalk and parking area continuation that we, that we permitted last year in COVID. And I'm wondering whether, from a municipal perspective, we are intending to have any presence, either a watching brief or any sort of presentation at, at PDAC Committee. And I, and I ask that simply because I don't know the extent to which administration has been engaged. I know that Jasper Chamber of Commerce is, has taken over the role of applicant, which is appropriate because we are the authority. But is there an intent that on our behalf, anybody is going to at least observe that session and make note of the arguments that are made both for and against?
Counselor Butler?
Thank you very much for raising that, Mayor Ireland. I would suggest that we request administration to ensure that representative of administration is observing that meeting.
Mr. Given, would you?
Yeah, thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson. Yeah, to his worship's point and Council but, I think it would be helpful if, if council, if that was council's intent to have municipal administration represented there, providing that clarity. I think we've, that's the desire. Certainly, we'll follow up on that. I think we likely would have anyways. But, you know, I would have to confirm that with Mr. Greathead or the other parties. But certainly, we can do that. I'll make sure that we have representation there to hear the concerns and the presentations in favor and opposed. And that council will be informed about how the PDAC meeting goes.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland.
I would appreciate that. And it may well be that administration already had that plan and doesn't need direction from council just to fulfill what it was going to do in any event. And it may be also that, as our meetings are, this meeting will be recorded and counselors themselves can go back. And if they're not available on the day, check the recording later on. But in any event, it, there may be very important information discussed at that meeting. And I think that we should avail ourselves of every opportunity to, to know what's being said. So if that's enough for Mr. Given, certainly enough for me. I did have one other matter that I wanted to.
Can I interrupt there? I'd like to just put another, Mrs. Pavlov is on the line and she is a panelist. If she'd like to, you know, add any more information regarding this topic, she may. If not, we'll carry on to your second. Mrs. Pavlov's, anything? She's, she's gone. Disappeared off the panel. It's okay. Moving on, Mayor Ireland.
Thank you very much. Agenda Item 11 is Council Representation on Various Boards. And I confess that I sometimes forget, and I don't keep handy, a copy of our committee assignment list. And I wonder whether, just as a routine administrative matter, whether that committee assignment list might simply be appended to our agendas as a, as a very last item, not for a discussion, but it would be helpful from time to time as we have discussions about matters that are ongoing in the community to just confirm who has been assigned to a relevant committee. I just, I would find that, that it would be useful just to have immediate access as an appendix to the agenda. And if council is interested in having something like that, I don't think it would be an administrative burden to just attach that to our agendas so that council has quick and easy reference to that. And it is, of course, an agenda item in any event. So it would be easy to attach it. So just a suggestion.
Okay, just a, so a note from Mrs. Pavlov. Nothing more to add at this point. She will be in contact with Mr. Given to discuss further. Okay, well, thank you, Mayor Ireland. Counselor Demota, please.
Well, just, I thank the mayor for bringing that up, Mr. Deputy Mayor, and through you to him. And maybe also Counselors Jurno. I know that the three of us collectively make up the Legislative Committee. And I'm wondering, while we're having this conversation, if it's pertinent to maybe discuss meeting in the near future, to review some of the conversations today and what some other things that we need to address going forward for that. Yeah, okay. So I'll, I'll contact you via email on that. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thanks, Counselor Demota. Anything further from counselors on this topic? Nothing further. So Agenda Item 12, Upcoming Events, immediately after this meeting is adjourned, we're going to have a Jasper Community Housing Corporation meeting via Zoom. Is not public, I don't think, no. Counselor Butler, please.
Just would like to clarify because I heard from a member of the board that that is a Jasper Community Housing Corporation shareholders meeting and not a Jasper Community Housing Corporation Board meeting, which is an important distinction. And I didn't notice that when I first read the agenda last week. Thank you.
So yes, and so that means that council will be in attendance, not board members?
That is correct. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay. Anything further on that topic? Doesn't look like 13, item 13 in camera. So we're going to be moving into camera to discuss two items. One, 13.1, a deliberative matter, intergovernmental agenda, as well as 13.2, a personal matter regarding the CAO. Okay, well, there we go. I don't think we're going to come out with any decisions after that. So I think everybody that is logged on, please don't wait for any, anything from us as we come out of in camera. We'll be coming out and then immediately adjourning the, the meeting. Thank you, everybody for attendance. Mr. Given, you'd like to add something, please?
Yes, Deputy Mayor Wilson, I would just say, I believe it's the CAO's responsibility to identify members of administration that may, you know, who will continue in attendance for the in-camera sessions. For 13.1, it would be Ms. Naton and other directors, appreciating that the discussion about intergovernmental matters may touch many areas of municipality and municipal services. So we would ask all the directors to remain in attendance. And then for 13.2, it would be myself and council, an opportunity for me to receive feedback from council as my employer. And obviously, HR employment matters are allowed under legislation. So just identify which staff would be sticking around for which items for a matter of the record.
Great, thank you. Sorry, are we going to have another Zoom, or most likely has been sent out to us via email to sign in to the in-camera? Is that, it is on email?
Yeah, I'm Deputy Mayor Wilson. I'm seeing in the chat that it has been sent out. So council members should be able to sign on to that if they go into their email and look for that link.
Okay, so let's take a five minute break and then we'll all log back in. So let's say, well, let's say 11:20. I don't want to do the math. 11:20, we'll log back in. Thank you, everybody, for your attendance. Really appreciate it. Again, we won't be coming out to make any decisions after in camera. So no need to sign, to hang on. Talk to you all soon. May I have a motion to go in cameras, please? Counselor Keller, thank you. All in favor? Counselor Butler, no? Can't see, there it is. All right, perfect. Well, thank you, everybody. We'll meet again soon.